All right. Good evening. It is Tuesday, June 29th, 6:00 PM on the dot. Here I declare the Board of Rowan Board of Selectmen open. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of the COVID disclaimer at the onset of the agenda.
Removed.
Whitman seconds.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Clark?
Aye.
Benoit?
Aye.
Whitman?
Whitman aye.
Nichols?
Nichols aye.
And recity, I motion carries unanimous. I'd ask that, again, we've got to get back in the habit because we're the person standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands aloneation, to God, to this world, to liberty, to justice for all.
Okay, thank you. First on the agenda, have the approval of Treasury Warrant 21-W26 and Payroll 21-PW26.
So moved.
Whitman seconds.
Any further discussion on Treasury Warrant payroll? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Clark?
Aye.
Benoit?
Benoit aye.
Whitman?
Whitman aye.
Nichols?
Nichols aye, excluding any COA wages.
And recity, I motion carries unanimous. We have approval of meeting minutes included in your packet from the 14th of June.
Approval is written.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Clark?
Aye.
Benoit?
Benoit aye.
Whitman?
Whitman aye.
Nichols?
Nichols aye.
And recity, I motion carries unanimous. Next, we have public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? I know that we have members of RDIC here.
Yes.
I would ask that you please participate in public comment. We're not made aware of your meeting with enough time to adjust the agenda, or else we'd have you on as an agenda item. So, it's fine, apologies for that. Mike, do you want to go ahead?
Sure, I can speak from here?
Yes, I believe you can. The microphone is right in the ceiling.
Okay, we just had an RDIC meeting. At that meeting, we voted to accept the purchase and sale agreement with Harbor Classic Homes. The official document is available from Tamika. The short story is, we have agreed to them developing the top parcel of the land only, just the top of the hill, which is some 32 or 4 acres. The sale price was 1.65 million dollars up from initially. We were offered $750,000 for that parcel and the parcel down called the Mozeo. I call it the Mozeo property. Not fair to do that, but I don't know what else to call it. So, the only other thing of significance is they're going to build between 88 and 142 senior housing structures there.
And so that 1.65, first of all, congratulations. I know that your team worked hard. Our team, our town administrator is not here. And even our interim TA was part of the initial negotiation, so I want to thank everybody on that end. That purchase price is reflected then, from what you just said, of more units than initially when we had originally received the proposal, correct? The original proposal, was it less units?
Eighty-eight, eighty-eight on the two separate parcels. Now it's between 88 and 142 on the one parcel.
So when are we going to know what the total unit count?
After, after design work is done.
Understood.
My assumption is they're going to want to maximize that to the best of their ability, which I think is fine.
Do you have any, anything, because I know that most of the negotiations have occurred in executive session. Is there any, are there any details related to the purchase and sale that you can share in so far as timeframe? Or is there a down payment or upfront occurrence that the town will receive?
We've received a $10,000 deposit. That's non-refundable. I expected today, but I did not get word from town council, we received it, but I'm expecting it probably tomorrow. $90,000 deposit. So that, that will be coming forthwith. I don't know what else I can say beyond that.
Is there a tentative closing date?
October 15th, I believe.
And that, the deposit money, does that go into?
Escrow.
Is that the town's, or does that go into the RDIC separate?
That's a good question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, how are we handling that, I guess is my question.
That's something we need to discuss.
Okay. Because as you can imagine, with our current budgetary issues, this is a big win for the town.
I don't think anybody on the RDIC thinks the 1.6 million dollars.
Oh, no, no, that's not what I, I just want to make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. Are there any more questions? I know we've had some briefings about the project. I know it's been an ongoing negotiation. Are there any other questions from the board members for Mr. Sullivan? Or the remaining members of his board that are here?
Was there any, if I may? Is there any work that needs, that the town needs to do on those parcels, or that parcel, or any groundwork that the town is looking for?
Well, part of the negotiations that still must happen and will be, become part of the definitive plan approval is, this is going to kind of get complicated, so I'll make it as simple as I can. You're all familiar with the roadways that go in there. The roadway that goes in and up to the right over towards the school, that's going to be their main means of egress. We have said, in addition to that, we want you to go over that road to the left and up around where, for those of you, Mr. Clark probably remembers at least, where the main building used to be, we want a second means of egress there. There will be a shared, they've agreed to a shared, sharing of the cost of updating that roadway to make it a second means of egress. So the town will have some obligation there. That, we don't know what it is yet, but again, you know, given the magnitude of the sale, I'm sure we have enough money to be able to deal with that.
And, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
That would still allow the town access to this other parcel and anything that's the dam, whatever. Oh, other than this property.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that.
That's exactly why we thought of reasonable position to take to share that cost, because not only the access to the dam and the, and the environmental site, the landfill, that property where the wind farm was going to go is still going to be owned by the town, so it seemed reasonable that that should be a shared cost.
And thank you for that foresight also, for the groups to kind of understand that that was an important piece to look at.
How, October is a quick turnaround for commercial closing of a project this size. I mean, how, how is the design phase going with HPDD? Is there a lot more work to be done there, or is that something moving on?
They really haven't even started the design phase yet. You know, it really took this to be able to put them over the edge to now really invest. I mean.
So are we closing without, I mean, are they going to work through the design process after close and ownership?
Oh, they're going to start right now.
Because that's, 90 days is, that's tight for the design phase. I'm just worried about the possibility of this moving into next spring. I was just curious as to how the design was going.
The attorneys agreed to that, so.
All right, and just last question from me is regarding, as part of that purchase and sale, do they have kind of an inspection period or a period they're going to be doing their due diligence up at the property? Are we aiding with them in that and spending any resources on that, or is that something they're?
That's their nickel.
Okay, do we have a?
The only, let me just think before I speak. I can't think of something off the top of my head that would be a cost to the town. I mean, any legal costs, they're paying our legal be, our legal fees. I don't anticipate, you know, at some point, we're going to have to have engineering reviews, but they will pay for our engineering views, reviews, much like the planning board, you know, charges a developer. So I don't, you know, there could be some costs, but they're incidental other than the roadway, in my opinion. They're incidental and/or unknown, let's put it that way.
Is that period that they have to complete those activities specified in the PNS?
Yes.
Can I ask what it is?
You can ask, but I'm not sure I can remember. Yeah. Buyers each have the right to enter the property from today until September 3rd.
Okay. And so I would imagine now that we're past the primary negotiation phase regarding the sensitive items, is it possible then, because everyone, I want everyone to be on the same page with this and all the boards and commissions working to get this done, that you think it would be appropriate, Mr. Sullivan, to have maybe monthly check-ins or co-meetings with this board just to kind of keep a surprise to the project? Or are we?
With this board?
Yes.
Whatever you'd like. I mean, we'll, we'll be meeting regularly and obviously, you know, you're welcome to our meetings at any time.
Absolutely. All right, well, great. I see that Carol, you have a question, and then Jeff also has a question.
Mr. Sullivan, I was reading on, Mike, I was reading up on the Harbor Homes proposal and saw mention of the senior center?
Mike, please. Thank you. Yes.
A senior center. Could you confirm what that, how that came?
Their intention is to build a, one, a senior center for the senior housing, not one for the town.
Okay.
This is a common area where they can play bingo, play cards, meet. Now, you know, is there a possibility that the town may have access to that? I think that's a possibility through the, you know, the land agreement.
So through the, yeah, usually a community room, most of those type of facilities have, it's just a joint prop space that they can all, all the residents can use.
Right.
For parties and things like that.
Right.
So it's not a, does it say senior center?
No, they call it a senior center because it's, but don't, don't mix it up with.
No, it's a community room, so they probably should relabel that. It would be confusing.
Because I was confused.
Yeah, don't, don't mix it up with our senior center.
Got it, no, thank you very much.
Mr. Stillings?
I'm a regular public comment. I'm related to Mike Sullivan's.
Okay, sorry. All right. Anybody else from this board have any questions from Mr. Sullivan? Again, we know you guys just met. Thank you all. Look forward to working with you, getting this to the finish line, but certainly appreciate all the work. Dave, I see you back there. I know you've been involved. Thank you as well for your expertise.
He's on vacation right now.
I know, I thought you were on vacation, but you picked a great place to spend it.
I had to come up with this. I had to come up with this. It was too important. I'd not have if I was in the area.
We appreciate it very much.
That'll go in your review too, for us.
An unsolicited comment, let me just say one thing. If it weren't for Dave, we would not have got this deal done in the manner in which we did. His expertise was instrumental in getting this done, so.
Well, we got Rose to name up there, so I'm thinking of Mike Sullivan and Dave George Wade might be.
I don't need Mike Sullivan, but.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
For the negotiation team as well as RDIC and HPDD, because I know it's been an ongoing process, so.
It's been a long time to get here.
So thank you for all the work.
It seemed like every corner we turned, there was another obstacle.
Always is.
But, if you.
And there still is. I mean, we, you know, not done yet, but it's good news.
Well, I just, I punched some very quick numbers, and if you take sale prices of $325,000 a unit times 88 units, that's well over half a million dollars in tax revenue. If you go to the 142, it's well over $800,000 in tax revenue. So, no kids in schools and tax dollars, so.
Plus all the permitting fees and everything else, which I know that you already calculated, which is a huge win for the town. So, wonderful, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be glad when the first shovel's on the ground and the first stick is on the foundation.
Oh, let's do it. All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
You have appointments tonight, I believe? Do you? That yes, no, of committee members?
We are going to look at appointments.
Is it necessary that I be here for our members?
I believe we have a packet with all of the emails and recommendations. If we don't have a recommendation, then we should be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Just one clarification, though. I noticed that Sean Moore is on Central Mass Planning Coordinator, so with a question mark.
Yeah, there's a couple of things we can talk about when we get there.
Okay, I just didn't know if that, what board that covered that.
It usually was the planning board that covered that.
Actually, if I could, there's two appointments to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. One is the planning board, that's the full delegate. The other one is an alternate delegate.
He's the alternate.
The only one that's required not to be, the one that's required to be a planning board member is the planning board's delegate. The select board's appointment, the alternate, could be anybody in the community as long as that person has an interest. So it doesn't have to be a planning board member.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Stillings, here for public comment? Go ahead, sir.
Thanks for fitting in. Hope you're all doing well. Jeff Stillings, three Lord Lane, member of the town's tricentennial anniversary committee. I'll be real, real brief. I appreciate if the board could place an agenda item for the next meeting. I'd like to give you an update on the status of our August concerts on the common.
It's already been placed, Jeff.
Well, I appreciate that. I look forward to giving you a briefing. Just wanted to mention in the public comment that in relation to the August concerts, I did file six applications. Six applications that I appreciate the board to take a look at. Most of them are time-sensitive. One is the permission to use the common, which previous debate discussed. One is for use of the billboard, so we can market this properly. And then the last were four individual pouring licenses that I appreciate your attention on and look forward to having you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Sounds great. I got the, Beth sent an email with all that stuff in it, so we obviously was still able to put it on the agenda for tonight, so it is on for the next meeting, and we should be able to take care of all that stuff.
I appreciate it, and it's supposed to be a good time, so thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Take care, everyone.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, I know we have people in the public, so if it's okay with the board, we'll just take the boy scout the item now unless we want to get down to it so that these folks can take on. So we have item 160, which is Connor, Connor Bill?
Yeah.
Who is going for your Eagle Scout designation, is that correct?
Yeah, correct. I'm looking, I'm seeking permission to carry out Eagle Scout project on the soccer field in Central Street Middle School. I'm planning to build a fence, two-foot tall fence along the wooden and wooden edge of the soccer fields to prevent balls that roll off the field to stop them. Yeah, I'm just certain, I'm just certain for permission there.
Okay, we've had, as I think some of the newer board members, we do have Eagle Scouts or prospective Eagle Scouts come in and like to do community projects for the town. One was the memorial in front of Community Hall, which had some pavers installed. There was another project, the flagpole, and we, these are great projects. So we usually, we grant these. I think with this particular project, we do want to put you in touch. I would recommend putting you in touch with the town administrator and DPW director to make sure that they can support you in any way that they can, and also provide you guidance as to where things will go and, and that kind of thing. So I'll entertain a motion to conceptually support the project. Go ahead.
Sorry, if I may.
Yeah.
Sorry, can you just also, kind of, as a courtesy, if you don't mind, reaching out to CTMS to, Mr. C, and some of the.
That's right.
I have, I have information.
Okay, just so that they're aware that, I know some of the teachers use the wooded area and everything, and just so that I think we as the town have the rights to do what we want with the property, but as a courtesy, so I'm trying to be what we did.
Yeah, the town actually, when this came in, Beth and Ron had instructed them to reach out to CTMS.
Okay, thank you.
So that's already been.
Perfect, thank you.
So I mean, I'd love to, you know, make a motion to support this project and refer you and have our town administrator reach out to you to help coordinate the logistics of it, make sure that we're all, all good to go. By the second?
Whitman seconds.
Any further discussion, questions from the board? See, none, we'll have a roll call vote. Clark?
Clark aye.
Benoit?
Benoit aye.
Whitman?
Whitman aye.
Nichols?
Nichols aye.
And recity, I motion carries unanimous.
Thanks, Connor.
Yeah, thank you so much for all you're doing, so. Any way that we can help, please feel free to come back.
Other than labor.
Actually, I heard that you liked doing manual.
I got enough on my own.
He's got that covered.
If you saw my fence, you wouldn't get my, want my help, so. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so going back to the agenda, we have no petitions, applications, awards, but we do have a reorg of the select board that is on the agenda, so we're going to reorg. So we're going to open it up for discussion from the board. Thoughts, motions?
I'll make a motion, Lyndon Nichols is chair.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? Lyndon, do you want to do it?
I've had a lot of people approach me about it. Yeah, I guess.
Let's just float that out there, that, Mr. Popular, a lot of people approached you about it? Is that?
I've had people comment, yes.
All right.
Yeah, I guess I will.
Okay, any further discussion from the board before we have a roll call? All right, roll call vote. Clark?
Clark aye.
Benoit?
Benoit aye.
Whitman?
Whitman aye.
Nichols?
Nichols aye.
And recity, I motion carries unanimous. Congratulations.
I'd like to nominate Carol for Vice Chair.
Second?
Vice Chair, uh.
Nobody goes on vacation, then.
Okay, so a motion and a second? Are you, my question would be, I know that you're new and you're acclimating, are you comfortable with, with that role? It's totally up to you. Otherwise, we're going to, you know.
I think I pass. I'll pass.
Are you sure?
Yeah, yes.
Because I think you'd be fantastic, so I just wanted to.
You do, that's why I nominated you.
Yeah, so it's, it's totally up to you, but I mean, if, if you'll pass, then they'd have to rescind the nomination, but I wanted to make sure that you'd be willing to do it.
What happens if I can't fulfill this duty?
Well, you only, you only have to do it if the chair is not a meeting.
If you're, and you're never going to be on vacation.
Yeah, but we're all here to, we're all here to help you. This is the idea.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, I will then thank you for all that.
Okay, any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Clark?
Clark aye.
Benoit?
Benoit aye.
Whitman?
Whitman aye.
Nichols?
Nichols aye.
And recity, I motion carries unanimous. Congratulations. The only, the other officer position left is the clerk. I feel that anyone has a nomination for that, that seat. Go ahead.
I'll nominate Mitch Crichetti.
Clerk. Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion from the board?
That means if there's nobody else here, you have to take all the notes down.
I, you know, I've done enough of that in my career, and I, I think I can probably, probably handle it.
Push record.
Push record.
Push record. All right.
Clark aye.
A roll call vote. Clark?
Aye.
Benoit?
Benoit aye.
Whitman?
Whitman aye.
Nichols?
Nichols aye.
And recity, I motion carries unanimous. Thank you. At this point, it is no longer my reading, no longer my meeting to run, so I'll hand it over.
So get that, that gavel.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
I'll, I'll leave it over. Can I make a comment, Mr. Nichols, before I cede the chair over to you?
Sure.
I just want to comment on, on how good it's been to work with this board. It's obviously been a very difficult year for a lot of people, for a lot of our employees, for a lot of the families and constituents we serve. I think everybody here has stepped up, and it's been tough for me personally, too. This is obviously a tough year to be chair, but I did want to thank everybody, all the boards and commissions we work with, and this board in particular, and all of our employees. It's been the, some of the things you've seen from people this year have been tremendous, so, thank you.
Thank you for your service. Appreciate all your hard work.
All right, Lyndon, have the agenda?
Looking forward to the next year. All right, so we're at department heads update. Do we have any departments on?
No.
Nope.
No updates. Nick's not even on, is that the administration?
No, he, in his, he did ask me if, if we needed him tonight, and the agenda was light, so I, I told him that I don't think we needed him for any, any of the items. So that's on me.
If I may, I just have a question about the email we had received about the yard waste stuff. I don't know.
What email? Was it the earlier ones?
This was, I think, last week.
Yeah, and it, there was an update too, I think.
I didn't get any update. It just kind of came out of the blue. I wasn't sure if, if there was backstory to that, but if the town administrator is not on, we can hold that until the next.
Right, well, that came from Joe, too, so Joe's not here.
Right, it came, the email came from Joe. I just wasn't sure what the.
So I guess that can go on the next agenda, but we don't, is there a date on when that's supposed to start?
I have no idea. The email came on Thursday, and I only have one email, so.
Oh, maybe that's the only, I haven't seen it.
I don't know, with some attachments, but pictures, but.
So we'll ask the chair to follow up.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that and ask that no action be taken until the board has a chance to discuss it.
I mean, yeah, I don't necessarily feel strongly about, but I just would have a question.
I have questions, I have questions myself, yeah. And then put it on the next agenda.
Thank you.
So, Nick didn't have any updates or anything to send us as far as admin stuff, town administrator stuff? No?
Nope. It's been a quiet week.
So we're going to look at appointments. I'm not sure how, did we get a copy of them again?
We did. They're in the file under appointments.
There's a separate tab.
Yeah, orange tab.
So, a lot of times we've done this as one swoop, but I think there's, I know I had a couple of questions.
I do as well.
Removal of.
Removal of, your appointment due to moving, so someone must have moved out of town?
Oh, that was one of my questions, maybe, because I know none of them is out of town moved, so that one's mine. But it doesn't say who.
Right, it doesn't, some names change.
So just as a note, I know on the new senior center committee, Carl Bindu has moved out of town, so he would need to be removed from the list.
So do we just want to, if I can make a recommendation through the chair? Do we want to just go through each board and, and do these, and when we get to those individuals, since it's, we have questions, we can discuss it then?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just wanted to get that one, because there's a note here, but it looks like it was already removed, and, right. Okay, so yeah, why don't we go through? First on the list is town council with KP Law, looking for a renewal of one-year term.
Whitman makes a motion to reappoint, or to appoint KP Law, PC, as town council for one year, term expiring 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Clark?
Clark aye.
Benoit?
Benoit aye.
Recity?
Aye.
Whitman?
Whitman aye.
And Nichols aye. So unanimous. Town accountant.
I make a motion to renew Town Accountant Scanlon and Associates LLC for a one-year term expiring in 2022.
Do we have a second?
Whitman. Whitman seconds.
Any discussion?
This is the current firm that we use now, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just know that there was questions as to whether Dan was staying on the attorney.
Right, is he agreeing to stay? Is that, that's what I was wondering, or is it, are we going to use the same firm, but maybe we'll have a different representative from the firm? Is that the?
I'm unaware. I know that there had been some discussion around that. I don't know what Dan's current plans are.
Yes, no, because, um.
So I can rescind my motion if we want to hold on on that.
Well, is he, is he the only, he's not the only one. This, this is a firm, right?
It's a firm.
So they have other accountants, so might, I assume that, right, if it's on, someone else would replace him from the firm if he were to leave.
I'm not sure what procurement would say, I mean, whether we'd have to go through stuff with procurement to bring on another firm would be my question with this particular, um.
And my assumption, if I may, my assumption was that these were presented to us, so they must have had town administrator
Right.
blessing. In the past, we've had the town administrator say they recommend so-and-so as town council, so-and-so as town accountant, that kind of stuff. So my assumption is that this list is presented to us for the boards and commissions that we ask for the chair recommendations or whatever. For this, I would assume that if it's presented to us, it's.
Right. I guess my concern was, if this already, if, if it already expired, will we not have an accountant? Alright. I guess my concern was, um, if this already, if, if, if it already expired, will we not have an accountant if we don't take action?
Right.
I mean, if we don't renew it now, do we wanna wait and not have a?
Well, that's, that's under the umbrella of the chair.
Right, so I guess that's my concern. So my, my assumption is it's, it's an agency and we're agreeing to go with the agency. And if for some reason the agency no longer wants to continue with us, then the town administrator will need to find a new accountant for us.
Yeah, I just, I know that there are a lot of firms that, different firms that do different towns around here. My only question about it is if we've done our due diligence in terms of, if Dan is leaving, um, I wanna make sure that we're best positioned and we're, you know, getting the most bang for our buck.
Lyndon, if I may, um, there was a discussion about it during, uh, with the finance committee back at the beginning of the budget season.
Yes, yes. Karen, Karen, do you have any information on whether, what's Dan's position is, whether he's leaving or not? Did she just put her name up there, Tim, to pretend she's listening to us?
No. I was just gonna text her, 'cause I.
It, it takes me a minute to, I was looking up Scanlon and Associates. Uh, Dan, uh, as I heard at town meeting, he is done. He wants to retire and enjoy life.
Okay. And, and you know of any other discussion regarding the replacement?
Uh, no, I've been asking since about March.
Alright, I'm gonna rescind my motion then, and I think because de facto, they would continue to be our accountants until we either reappointed them
Okay. Yeah.
or pick somebody else, and we'll get clarification when we're on back from vacation, would be my recommendation.
I mean, if I may.
Yep.
Looking at their website, it looks like they are a team and there's, you know, a whole list of, um, CPAs available, but I don't know.
Right.
And it, they, yeah.
I, I mean, I personally agree with Mitch that if we don't know for sure, I, I thought Dan was willing to stay on for a little longer. Um, but if we're gonna, if we're gonna change accountants, then I think we really wanna take a good look at who we're gonna bring on, so, um.
And maybe it makes sense to stay with them because they have the history of town in, in their firm, but without some sort of dialogue with the town administrator, I have questioned it.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, so we're not, we're not saying no, but we're, we're gonna just, I, you know, I think since we rescinded it, um, if we can just have a mo- motion to hold off on this one until then, till we get more information.
Yeah. I'll just make a motion to hold this until next meeting.
Do we have a second on that?
Second, I don't think you need a motion.
Well, if we take an action on all these other ones, if we don't take any action.
Well, no action is just de facto, continues as is until we take action.
I mean, I don't think it's a hurt to have, like, support.
Right, 'cause it shows, so it doesn't look like we just disregarded the individual.
Yep.
Alright, any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Clerk aye.
Benoit aye.
Resity aye.
Whitman aye.
Nichols aye, so we'll just take no action at this time. The next is the ad commission.
Um, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, take him as a slate and, uh, reappoint, uh, Kate Travies for, uh, one-year term expiring twenty twenty-two. Uh, David Dolan for three-year term expiring twenty twenty-four, uh, Dick Williams, uh, as an alternate, uh, for a one-year term expiring twenty twenty-two. And Mary Coppola as an alternate for a one-year term expiring twenty twenty-two, uh, as long as we have, um, letters of interest and, uh,
Like in that.
endorsement from the chair.
I don't, I'm looking, I don't see specific endorsements from the chair on these, but maybe it's in the file, the appointment.
Yeah, it's right here, right, is, oh, no, I.
Oh, mm-hmm. I see the letters of interest?
Yeah, that's not the chair.
I, I, I have a feeling that's a way, I don't think we have anywhere near the number of interest endorsements.
Yeah, we usually, and, why I wanted to move this the last meeting, if I can, through the chair.
Providing.
Yeah.
Is that, we usually have provided a spreadsheet that indicates whether we have received a letter of interest and whether we have received endorsement from the chair as just an X on both, so we know what we're looking at, because we have a lot of materials. And to Carol's point, there's a lot of stuff that's not organized that we really can't see whether we have an endorsement from the chair or not.
Well, we actually specifically asked for that at the last meeting.
We did. And we have some, but again, this is gonna, it's gonna take four hours if we have to piece through everything without a comprehensive list. Mr. Williams, oh, sorry, I'm not.
Um, being on the ad commission, I did receive a letter, and it strains that you did not, from Glenn Coppola about the, you know, the list. So it, it was out there, apparently I did not make it to the end there.
Um, I am looking.
Okay, there is, there is a master list at the end of your packet. With a spreadsheet in it.
Alright, I'll actually get it.
But again, it doesn't have who's reapplied and who has endorsement from their respective chairs.
What I'm seeing on Google Drive is the same thing that we have in our packets. Which are like the letters of interest, but not specifically the, um, in, in this case specifically not the, the chairs.
Well.
I mean, I hate, if I may, I hate to n- not go through at least some of these and get.
Right, 'cause some people want to get to, I think, I think there's meetings and everything's ar- already going on and stuff, and some people that have been waiting, that have sent theirs in for some time, so.
And that's how.
I don't think we should just discontinue the whole process. Um, I mean, if we, if we can motion, we can just, um.
Well, I think, can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
I have no problem with appointing on the contingency that we receive a letter of support from the chair. And if there are any issues, we revisit that appointment, um, just not to slow down the process, because I know, I believe Mr. Williams, when he says that, you know, Glenn sent it in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, he's been on ad commission for a long time, involved in that community, so I think there's just maybe a disconnect there with some of those, those recommendations.
Okay, but even, even like with the ad commission, I see three out of the four, but do you deserve all four letters? I only see the fourth. I see Kate Travis.
I don't see Kate. Travis. But I thought I had seen hers last week, or two, so I don't remember.
I mean, I don't wanna be nitpicky about it, but if we're requesting everybody send a letter, then I think we can just say.
Who's the chair? Chair, I think this is the first year that you are doing this, or it seems like it anyways, and we've never done this before, so.
Well, I can remember us asking for letters of support, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We have, oh, yeah.
It's technically in our policies and procedures that we need to, and it's something we have gotten away from.
Yeah.
And we are trying to get back to that point where we're uniform. The intent being, if you have contested seats, that individuals go to a meeting, talk to the chair, understand what's involved, and then we get to make a better decision.
Well, a couple of weeks, we'll have a meeting, I don't, in, in our minutes, she's already been voted on, you know, so.
Tim.
I just, for the RDIC, I just, that's one of the reasons I was here. I'm pretty much sure Mike has got his recommendation, and I've got my request to be reappointed, so. Just, I didn't want you guys, I guess my, in my opinion, to avoid doing at least the ones that were.
Oh, no, we're gonna go through each and decide, we're not, yeah, we're not doing it as a slate.
Okay, alright, good. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So, like I said, I mean, I, I believe Dick, when he said there was a letter of support, but I, the only problem is there's no letter of interest for Kate. So there's any feeling from the board as to, how we wanna proceed with that? Because we have no, no recommendation from the committee and we don't have one letter of interest, we have three out of four.
I. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to appoint the ad commission applicants as a slate pending receival of those letters.
I'm new to the question, but we already have a motion and a second, so we have to rescind and struggle for, for.
Okay, that was my motion, I think.
Yeah, it was your mo- your motion, we're just.
Yeah.
You wanna add the contingency portion to the same motion?
Alright, just to clarify, I'll rescind my motion, and the new motion would be to appoint agricultural, agricultural commission as a slate pending the receival of board chair's support. And if, if Kate isn't interested, I guess we can, we can deal with that.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Alright, roll call.
Clerk aye.
Benoit aye.
Resity aye.
Whitman aye.
Nichols aye. Okay. This is gonna be a long process.
Uh, Cable, we have recommendations.
Yeah.
Through the chair, um, from here, and I believe everyone is expressing interest.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Cable Advisory Committee as a slate. Mr. Mattson has a full member for a three-year term expiring in twenty twenty-four. Christian Santillo with a two-year term expiring twenty twenty-three, Peter Crane with a two-year term expiring twenty twenty-three, and James Kelly with a three-year term expiring twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I just wanna add for the public listening, that leaves still one vacancy for a one-year term, so if anybody's interested, um, to send a letter of in, you know, talk to any of those members and then send a letter of interest to the town administrator.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Clerk aye.
Benoit aye.
Resity aye.
Whitman aye.
Nichols aye. Okay, capital improvement. One second. So, we have two, do we have letters from that?
I see a letter for Mitch, well, en- endorsement from Harry about Mitch, but I'm looking to see.
I had, through the chair, if I may.
Hmm.
I had written a letter, an email to Harry, um, I know he's been in and out, uh, I think, uh, with some health issues, and Harry did send the recommendation. Um, I can tell you because I'm here that I am interested, and I did ask for that recommendation. I also know that, uh, Dan Gracie, if it's not here, he had done the same thing, um, and Harry had given his endorsement, uh, during a, uh, the last capital improvement planning meeting.
Okay, roll call for a void.
Can I get, well, do you want a contingent on getting just, we should get a copy of the endorsement, in, in, a letter of interest from the other nominee. You wanna do a contingent on that, Skip?
Yep.
I mean, we'd made, made everybody else send follow-ups, so we probably should be consistent.
So why don't we just blanket everybody, send one, instead of adding a ton of typing for, uh, our young lady over there?
Well, well, I mean, I, some of them will be complete, I don't think every, I don't think everybody, uh, needs, some people already sent in the endorsement and the interest.
Yeah.
So everybody's, it's, they're gonna, gonna be a little different.
Okay, yeah, alright.
So, do we have a s-, so that was Skip made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Clerk aye.
Benoit aye.
Hey, I didn't call for a vote yet.
Sorry. But I just.
No, roll call, so.
Clerk aye.
Bernard aye.
Resity aye.
Whitman aye.
Nichols aye.
And through the chair, I, I do think there's a disconnect, because I, I know that Dan, I, the whole committee saw that, so I know that those emails exist. Um, I know Dan sent one in, I know Harry sent one in, so I think that there's just an issue with some of the material not getting to us, which makes our job obviously a little harder.
Right, so, do some follow-up on that, but just as long as we have it on, you know, on record, so, like I said, I wanna be consistent in the way that we're handling each, each request. Alright, conservation commission. And.
I think we're on a whole Russian phone neck meeting. Isn't that what, uh, Peter was saying?
Out through the chair, uh, the, uh, chair of conservations here.
Okay.
I know we have a letter of interest, I don't know if it's in the packet, is it in the packet?
Well, there's an email here.
We have. Yeah.
From Peter, and.
Wait, I send an email?
About Joe. So Peter, do you have any, can you kinda enlighten us, so we've got two nominees?
What I can say very briefly is that the commission has not had a discussion yet, we're going to have it next Tuesday at our next meeting.
Okay.
About both, uh, the, the reappointment and the new appointment.
Okay, so.
And I don't think it would be appropriate for me to render.
No, that's fine.
My own opinion about it until the board, uh, till the commission votes.
So, yeah, I'd recommend that we hold off on this until we get all the documents as far as letters of interest and recommendations from the board.
Okay, so we'll just take, we'll take no action on that.
And. If I may, for the public watching, Peter, it looks like there's potentially two vacancies, there's one reappointment and two vacancies. Is that, am I, how's the best way to phrase that?
Actually, I, that's. Uh, one member is not up for reappointment, one member has recently passed, and the third is asking for reappointment, that's the state.
Alright.
So, uh, if the board reappoints the one reappointment and also appoints at your next meeting the, the other applicant, we still have one open slot available.
And so, and currently there is, um, you can continue to serve because you serve until reappointment, so it doesn't.
Correct. Carryover appointments are explicitly called out in the law.
And you're. You didn't, you don't lose quorum issues or anything.
So are, are you looking to fill that vacancy, that you think that there's gonna be interest before the next meeting, that you'd be able to fill the?
I hope so, I hope, but my crystal ball is broken, I can't predict. We'll try.
Alright, so, take no action on that until the next meeting. Ah, next is, maybe I'll pass, I'll pass this off to Carol, because it's council on aging, just to be politically correct.
I don't know, can I be?
Yes.
I was just wondering if June Willie was on, I bet she's not.
No.
Um. So, we are looking, um, at the Council on Aging Committee, we have Pastor David Fish, who is, do we have any of the? Let me look, do we have any of this?
Yes, the letters of interest and the support is in the packet.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint Ben Frost, uh, and David Fish to, uh, the Council on Aging Committee, both with three-year terms expiring twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
So, I'm, if I may, through the chair, um, I'm looking for, I believe this, but I'm looking for Pastor Fish, we've.
I haven't seen that.
Um, I see the, I see Ben's letter of interest and, um, Carolyn's support. Um, I'm looking for, again, I thought I had seen something where, I don't.
You think the good pastor is lying there?
Oh, I don't.
Hmm.
I thought I had seen something as well to that effect.
And it could have been in an email, it could have been, I, I don't know.
Well, he's probably, uh, they're, they're meeting in ten minutes, I think, so, they're probably open the hall.
I mean, uh, for consistency, is it?
Yeah, that's good.
Should we amend to appoint with the condition that we get that, um, those letters for Pastor Fish?
Yes, we should amend that, amend, amend.
I'll make a, I'll amend my motion, um, contingent upon receiving a letter of interest from, uh, Pastor Fish.
An endorsement.
And an endorsement from, uh, the other board chair.
I don't know who made, I don't think I made the second, but.
I seconded it, I said, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You, you didn't.
Yeah, I did, I shook my head.
You shook it, I didn't hear a battle, I didn't hear a battle.
I heard.
We're gonna be here all night just on this, and we got other stuff to do, let's, uh, let's just move it down the road.
Okay, uh, roll call?
Clerk aye.
Benoit aye.
Oh, yeah, Resity aye.
Whitman aye.
And Nichols will abstain. Nichols all abstained.
Okay, I see something here.
Council on Aging passes.
Vote for a trial.
Okay. I thought we just appointed. This kid, this individual.
The years are running together.
Oh no, this is something else. Okay, can I get a motion, um, for appointment?
Waitman, Waitman makes the motion to appoint Michelle Allstrom as a full member to the co- count for, uh, full member.
Second.
Yeah, for one year.
We have, we have the material.
Yeah.
Fine, so, okay. Um.
Okay, um, any discussion? Vote?
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye. Alright, Earthworks.
Motion to appoint Clint Copper slash Ad Commission Member for a three-year term on the Earthwork Board.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye.
Just a quick comment, there's one m- at-large vacancy for that board, so if anyone's interested.
It is not at large.
Oh, it says at large.
Yeah, it is a mistake then. It is, the, the mo- the Board of Health.
Board of Health.
Has not, uh, reappointed or has not appointed a replacement since Bush Nato stepped down, and they've been busy enough with COVID, so we haven't pressed the issue.
That's fine, I take that back then. I just, my notes had that, so I'm trying to get the vacancies out also, sorry.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, I'll make a motion to appoint the Fourth of July Committee as a slate because it can have unlimited members and there's no competing membership, so. Um, I think it's just the right thing to do. All those folks have worked really hard.
Waitman seconds.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Historical Commission?
I do think we have this stuff on hand.
Yep.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint Lynn Turcot and Sheila Junkins to the Historical Commission, uh, for three-year terms expiring in twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Alright.
I'm gonna go ahead and, just to keep things going, uh, make a motion to reappoint, uh, members of our Insurance Advisory Committee as a slate because again, this is consisting of town employees and personnel. I don't believe a recommendation is necessary. Um, but I think Beth did check with all of them to make sure they were still interested. Um, so the members are Rebecca Tuttle, Don Habikowski, Neil Viner, Kerry Reddington, Dan Herzig, uh, Jason Citronell, Rachel Crompton, and Michael Gleason, all for one-year terms expiring in twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Alright, Memorial Day Committee. Any motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Memorial Day Committee as a slate. Again, I believe this committee, uh, does not have unlimited members. Um, all one-year terms. John Byron, uh, William Bailey, uh, Philip Canal, William Crichley, and David Heger.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll, roll call?
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Uh, R I, RDIC appointment?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Tim Marwold as a former RDIC for a five-year term expiring in twenty twenty-six. Uh, noting that Mister Sullivan was in here earlier and did give his verbal, uh, recommendation for the individual, and the individual is sitting around.
And we also have written also, just.
Yes. We have way too much.
Second. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call?
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Uh, Solar Committee?
I'll make a motion and appoint the Solar Committee as a slate. Again, I believe these are, uh, positions coming from different boards and town staff. So these are for a one-year terms and the committees will be our RRG rep, Norm Anderson, uh, DPW Director Buckley, uh, Robert Donaldson, uh, Dick Williams, and the Town Administrator Ron Sanang.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Three Hundredth Committee?
We do have support documentation for the Three Hundredth, and I know the Chair, uh, Ms. Dibb had sent her recommendations over. Again, the Three Hundredth does not have limited seats, so I'm of the opinion that everybody that wants to serve should be able to serve, so I'll go ahead and, and make a recommendation that, um, the Three Hundredth Committee, uh, re- uh, appoints, uh, Megan Romkeke, Sherry Haber, and Ben Frost as full members, um, to the Three Hundredth Committee.
Second.
And for discussion if I can through the chair.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanna make sure we, we end up with term dates for this Three Hundredth, and that's something the board is gonna have to decide on. Um, it's, it's obviously, we have a specific goal in mind, it would be my intention that, you know, when you have a board that has fundraising capabilities, that we set an end date so that those activities can be wound down and the financial accounts can be closed out.
About twenty twenty-three, that's what everybody else is listening to.
Well, I just think that we, we need to set, maybe this is something that goes on the agenda for the next meeting through the chair, if I can request, but we need to set an end date, um.
Well, if we, if we're making the appointments, why can't we make the appointments contingent on the expiration of the terms?
Okay, I can amend my motion.
Why do we go to another meeting?
Well, because it's for the whole committee. I don't know how those other folks were appointed.
Uh, yeah, I'm not, if I, I may, I'm not sure that that, when that committee was formed, because.
And that's kind of more my question.
Right, that there's an end date for that committee, because it's clearly, uh.
Right. But I guess my thought is that this, uh, this is gonna be over in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Through the chair? It does sit, um, on the spreadsheet, it has a comment, the committee shall dissolve in twenty twenty-three after the events of the three-hundredth anniversary and the evaluation of success.
Okay, so let's, I'm gonna amend my motion, uh, to end the term dates of the individuals to conclude after the events of the three-hundredth, uh, three-hundredth anniversary have taken place in the summer of twenty twenty-three.
Agreed.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call?
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Zoning Board of Appeals.
I think we have emails out there. I'll make a motion that we appoint, um, Chris Senical to the full member three-year term for the Zoning Board of Appeals and.
Second.
Okay, do you wanna do, I didn't know if we wanted to do, um.
You only got one member.
But there's an Associate Board of Appeals.
Alright, good. Had, had it in.
And Paul, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, Kareen, that's what I thought. Sorry, Paul. Um, full member, three-year term as the alternate for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yep, second again.
Alright, any discussion? Roll call?
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Uh, Ad hoc, um, Building Committee?
See, through the chair, if I can. This board, we appointed these folks more than a year ago and they've never met. And so I don't, we don't have any emails or written communications, I think, from any of them. I don't even think, 'cause I've had a conversation with a couple of these folks, they don't even know that they're on the board. So.
What is the mission of the board?
So, if I may.
Well, if they've never met, they, I, I don't think anybody knows.
Nobody knows.
If, if I may, I think the original goal was to do what, um, Ron had the, the grant, come in and look at the building, the state of the buildings, the town on buildings, and look at potential repairs or whatever.
Okay.
Um, that was, I think, my, and I, I don't know if it makes sense, this might be a question for the town administrator, if it makes sense to have a committee to continue work based off the recommendations from this, when the.
So codes.
If I, if I may though, this, this board was formed a long before Ron got here with these individuals
Right.
and half of them, well, the board's never met and they don't know they're on the board.
I, that's, I mean, that's, but I think my question is, does it make sense to hold this, have a discussion with the town administrator, does it even make sense that it exists?
Yeah.
And if so, do we reach out to these folks to see if A, they're still interested, or B, they're not interested, or, or whatever?
Right.
And open it up for additional.
Well, I, I think, well, I mean, if you have a board and you're appointed, somebody should take some initiative immediately, of course, to.
So do.
Well, I, I think the fact that Ron put himself on here, we should probably take no action and wait till we discuss with the town administrator, see what his intent, intentions were, why would he have put himself on the?
No, I know, I'm just, this board has already been formed and we appointed folks to it. Doesn't, these are all existing, uh, besides Ron.
Committee.
Um, and, uh, DPW and the Fire Chief, I think the other members were appointed to this over a year ago.
And I think, if I may, I think it was formed right shortly before COVID hit, and I don't know, I mean, I'm not sure, and then Tia Nicholson left and COVID.
So why don't we just hold it till Ron comes back?
Alright, take no action till we discuss with the town administrator to see if it's a valid committee?
Right.
Yes, no action.
I mean, why would we, without having discussed, have at least the courtesy of discussing with the town administrator to make sure it wasn't something that he just.
Well, I know, I, I just, I'm, we have a lot of boards and commissions that don't meet.
Yeah, I would say the next two, we just.
I mean, it, you know, if you, if you got a lawnmower in the garage you could never use and it's been thirty years, you know.
Right, but I think as a courtesy, without the town administrator being present, since he put himself on the committee, there might be some intentions, so I wouldn't wanna disre- disregard, disregard his, uh.
So. Right.
So, we'll just.
So would you like a motion not to do anything with the next two?
Oh, we could take, we could take no action.
Well, we, if the others agree, we'll just take no action till we discuss it with the administrator, if, if appropriate, then, uh,
On the next two?
Right, you, well, you can make it for both, yeah, the, uh, the new senior senate committee, I don't think's ever met either.
No, for those two, we'll just take no action until.
Is the board amendable to that?
Yes.
I think it makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, Ethics Commission Liaison?
Yeah, I'll make a, a motion, uh, to appoint Anita Carlson as the Ethics Commission Liaison, uh, that's part of her duties as clerk for a full, uh, one-year term expiring twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call? Do you have a question?
I do have a question, um, because she is a, an employee of the town. Is, in, it may be written in bylaws regarding employments.
She is, she is not really an employee of the town, she's an elected official.
She's elected.
Elected official, how, everybody is technically an employee of the town.
So, really.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's my understanding that.
If she goes, does the end date change with that, is what I'm.
Well, we have to, I mean, it's my understanding best practice is that the town clerk, it also serves as your, your ROA for your, um, your, uh, public documents, so your FOIA requests, your Ethics Commission Liaison, and your Municipal Hearing Officer is all, that's part of her responsibility. So I would imagine that if you had another election and somebody else came in, that person would assume those roles, but the board has to appoint them on an annual basis.
Mm-hmm. Perfect.
Does that answer?
Yes, my understanding helps, yes.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Uh, Municipal Hearing Officer?
Make a motion to appoint Anita Carlson for a one-year term expiring in twenty twenty-two as the Municipal Hearing Officer.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Uh, Chief Proc- Proc- Procurement Officer?
Go ahead and make a motion that we appoint the town administrator Ron Sangangelo as the Chief Procurement Officer for the town, one-year term expiring twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanna note, I think that Mister Buckley had also recently received that designation as a backup, uh, in case something happens where we, Ron leaves or, um, goes down, uh, we do have a, a backup CPO.
Well, he trained us all in it. Didn't you sit in, didn't you sit in the train?
Well, the official state certificate.
I know, I'm just saying.
Right.
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Constable?
Uh, I believe we have information on hand for the Constable from Mister Mozio. And also Mister Salz.
And Mister Anderson.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and, uh, make a motion to, uh, reappoint, uh, for a one-year term, all for one-year term expiring twenty twenty-two. Uh, Mark Mozio, uh, Richard Salz, and Ralph Anderson, uh, as in the position of Constable, the town of Rutland.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Sealer of Waits and Measures.
Exciting stuff. Do we have anything from this individual?
Yes.
We do.
We have a document saying that he, um, would like to be, I know, he would like to be appointed.
Alright, um, I don't, there's no chair to recommend, so it just comes down to us, I think, through the chair. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to, um, appoint, uh, Edward Seeler for a one-year term as the Sealer of Waits and Measures and all of the important duties that lie within for that position, town of Rutland.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Veterans Graves Officer?
We have a note also that, um, he's interested.
Oh, that's Henry, that's old school.
Yeah, he wrote a hand note. Yeah.
Alright, um, I like that. I'll go ahead and make a motion, uh, to, uh, appoint Philip Canal as the Veteran Grave Officer on a one-year term expiring in twenty twenty-two, the town of Rutland.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Block eye.
Benoit eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Uh, next is ADA Coordinator?
Go ahead and make a motion, I think we have a letter here, so.
Indeed.
Um, to appoint, reappoint Cindy Purcell, uh, as the ADA Coordinator for the town of Rutland on a one-year term expiring in twenty twenty-two.
Second.
I have a question. In this, um, are we the, as the appointed authorities, are, are we the one that would meet? Because, um, in the email back from Cindy, it says hopefully we get to meet and talk about some stuff at some point. Would that be to meet with Anita, meet with us, meet with Council on Aging?
We would probably coordinate with the town administrator. Um, actually, I was, I was gonna ask, ask questions, I didn't realize we had a formal ADA coordinator.
Mm-hmm.
We have to.
Oh, I know, we have to, but I didn't know we actually, because they always said it was the, the building inspector or something, they would just, I didn't know we actually had a form, formal appointee. So, uh, my question is, is this individual should be consulted as, to any repairs, to any municipal entry, um, entries?
Through the chair, if I can comment. Um, I know that the town has had, uh, an ADA study done, which was funded through the Mass Office of Disabilities with the state, which is a comprehensive document as to what repairs are needed. Are you familiar with that, see?
Yeah, I remember.
I think there, maybe that was like a year, year and a half ago.
Yeah.
Um, and they came in, it was a grant funded, and they had a consultant look at all the buildings to see what repairs were necessary. Um, and that we had this position in place, so I think what you're saying, if, if they're gonna meet and consult, I think, um, we should already make aware that that document exists for reference, to make things easier for folks.
Well, just to let you know, I've been a compliance reviewer for the federal government for like thirty years, and they're required by state and federal law, so that's why I was questioning. Um, 'cause you're right, 'cause we could be sued if we don't have that document in place, the self-evaluation and transition plan.
Yeah.
Um, my question is, is Cindy being consulted when any kind of repairs are being done to any of the, the buildings? Like, was she involved at all with the new ramps that were put in, in this building or the community center? Or any kind of repair? I guess I would make a motion that the town administrator and the, um, the DPW Director consult with Cindy on any repairs, any entries to, uh, municipal properties.
Yeah, and I'll second. I just wanted to bring up that document, 'cause it hasn't been, it hadn't been widely publicized when the state came back with that.
Right.
So I just don't know if everybody knows that that was done, so.
Right. And we're required to have that, like I say, available upon request by any citizen or anybody. Um, and if it's not available, then, then the town is liable, um, to possible suit.
And I'm not sure, if I may, if Cindy was consulted with, when the work was done at this, um, Council on Aging building at the community center, but I thought that there was cl- attention paid to what ADA requirements were necessary.
And. Right.
But it could be, take some of that workload off the town administrator or whomever is managing that aspect of.
I do know there are problems with the way that that was done.
Okay.
And I know that they're looking at the doorway, and I think that it would be appropriate that Cindy be involved to assure that, especially considering the people that most, l- most use that facility may have impairments, would require, um, proper access.
Mm-hmm.
So prior to any, 'cause they're currently looking at repairing the doorway of that, there were grant funds set aside or, or funds set aside at town meeting specifically for that, that doorway. And as I said, there were problems with the way the ramp was done, it was never done correctly as it is. So I think that we would, um, wanna make sure that Cindy had, had the opportunity to, uh, give input on, on any kind of repairs. Carol?
There's also not just physical
Mm-hmm.
requirements, there's also accessibility on our websites and everything that we do.
All, all programs and everything, correct.
Yeah.
Um, and it sounds like she needs to be consulted to start with. Not that I've ever done anything, is what she's said, so. Does this sound like she has been at all?
I mean, I'm more than willing to talk to Cindy to make sure, because as I said, I.
I am as, I am as well as far as digital things go, except for the work of time.
Yeah, 'cause, well, I mean, as far as the requirements and the documents and everything, um, for sites and things like that.
Yeah, 'cause some of the feedback we've gotten just with the more digital meetings is there's no subtitles or anything.
Exactly.
Um, for hearing impaired, so.
Yeah.
So if the board's in agreement, we'll just make sure that the, uh, that the.
But we had a motion and a second.
Right, but the ADA. Right, but the ADA coordinator is, is, yeah, is utilized and consulted upon all repairs.
Is utilized.
Right. But we have the vote on.
Okay.
Clock eye.
Benoit eye.
For city eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? All right.
Does that vote cover both, cause that, I think we s-
No, that was a separate motion, so you still have to, that can vote to reappoint Cindy.
Because I had asked, we had the motion in the second for the reappointment, I think I had asked for clarification during that opening, so the motion in second to reappoint Cindy's already on the table, I think.
Wait, we're on the table, we just haven't voted on that.
Okay.
But, I mean, we were just clarifying responsibility, I don't.
We didn't vote to reappoint the person though.
Oh, I thought that was what originally that third one was.
No, we, we voted.
No, literally, you just went on a rant.
No, it's a good expression.
I didn't vote.
It's a point, stop.
We voted on, um, basically utilizing Cindy, the ADA coordinator, um, making sure that.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm, I'll, I think I made the original motion, so I'll just restate my motion to appoint, um, Cindy Purcell as the ADA coordinator for the Town of Rutland on a one year term expiring twenty twenty two.
Second.
All right, vote call?
Skip already said in the day.
All right, skip already said, restate it.
All right, roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoit eye.
For city eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Central Mass Regional Planning Commission?
These are appointed by the planning board, I think, or one of them is, do we have something from the norm?
Yeah, we have something saying that, um, that Dick Williams wants to be reappointed, and he believes that he was elected to be so at their last meeting, so.
It was.
Okay, it's in the minutes, all right, I'll go ahead and make a motion then to appoint, um, Mr. Dick Williams, uh, as a full member of, for the Central Mass Regional Planning Committee. Um, a one year term expiring in twenty twenty two, and I'll go ahead as a slate, and, uh, because the alternate doesn't have to part the planning board, um, make a motion to, we don't have interest, so I'll just go ahead and stop it, Mr. Williams.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoit eye.
For city eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye?
And, if I may, that, it's showing here that we still have the potential alternate opening just for the public, if anyone's interested, um, for serving as an alternate to the CM RPC, which will be a one year term.
Great.
Uh, Stormwater Advisory Committee.
Make a motion to appoint DPW Director Joe Buckley to the Stormwater Advisor Committee, Advisory Committee as a full member, uh, for a one year term expiring twenty twenty two.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoit eye.
For city eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? And we have nobody for that, so.
Uh, that's actu- the WCRTA, I believe that appointment is usually through the chair from this board to serve in that capacity.
So, if I may, I think we haven't had a representative for quite some time.
Yeah.
Um, because this is the Worcester County Regional Transit Authority, and I thought when Ron was hired on, he had expressed some interest and potentially be, he had attended a lot of those meetings and was interested in continuing on, but
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We don't have anything official from that, and so, um, maybe we can reach out to Ron and see if he's interested in attending those meetings, actually.
We do no action at Delaware Docking.
Yep, we don't have any action to take anyway.
Unless you wanted to throw somebody under the bus and put one of us, no pun intended, for this year.
Do you wanna get run over?
Okay, healthcare benefit consultant.
Twenty year. Uh, we'll go ahead and, and make a motion to reappoint the FOIA group as our healthcare benefits consultant on a one year term expiring twenty twenty two.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoit eye.
For city eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Uh, representative to watch you sit Earth Day.
Again, through the chair, if I may, that's usually a representative from this board.
Mm-hmm.
I think the coach here should do it. Yeah, I think I, I dominate, uh, Carol for the, uh, Earthwork Board.
No, why choose an Earth Day?
Why choose Earth Day?
The recycle center.
The recycle.
I mean, that's.
That's important stuff, I mean, you know, we, uh.
How often do they meet, I mean, I, well, before that, do we have a second?
I'll second.
If, okay, for discussion, um, I don't, I don't think it's very time consuming, Carol, I mean, it's, it's up to you.
But I'm, I'm curious, Sheila Dips is listed here, is that?
Because she was formerly on the board and she was previously, right.
Because that's, you know, passed.
I think the biggest thing is the setting the budgets, because it's a regional, um.
Yeah, we pay thousands of dollars to that place, and then you as a citizen still have to pay to get rid of your trash.
I know.
That's wrong.
Well, and that's, yeah, we, the board was not made aware when the prior representative negotiated a raise in our rates either, so please make us aware if you raise our taxpayer levy, um, for this item.
Yeah.
So are, are you amendable to, okay, any other discussion? Roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoit eye.
For city eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Uh, record access officers.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we appoint, uh, Anita Carlson, Damian Bartek, Seth Knight, Michael Moriarty, uh, Nick Monaco, and Jackie O'Brien. Uh, for our record access officers, in line, again, with best practice for those employees on a one year term expiring in twenty twenty two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoit eye.
For city eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? All right.
Uh, if I can through the chair before we move to the next item.
Yeah.
Um, there are some boards and commissions that aren't listed here, we've never, we've had lingering issues with, we haven't resolved. Um, we have a, for example, the Managed Growth Bylaw Subcommittee, um, that still has active members that hasn't met, but, I mean, as part of cleaning up those boards, I know Leah brought this up a few times. We have to really look at these charges and take a look at what some of the boards and commissions are doing and, and take action on some of that stuff.
Has, have we ever asked Ron to review them, prior, did we didn't ask him to review them prior to us making appointments?
I've asked in the past to have updated lists of charges and everything, and haven't gotten it, but I don't remember honestly if it was when Ron has been on, or if it's been.
The last time we had an updated list, I think, was in the summer of last year, with the charges.
And I can find like a comprehensive list, with either A, it exists and here it is, or B, it doesn't exist, um, so.
Yeah.
He's gonna have access to make sure that we catch every committee, he's gonna have the.
So I started going on the website and trying to find what's available.
Anita, the town clerk, right?
Anita, Anita would be the one to.
Yeah.
But not everything is on the website.
No, Anita swears everybody in, so she has a master list of, of all that stuff, so.
Okay. So I'll, I, you know, sorry, the board, I'll, I'll review that with Ron and have him get together with Anita to follow up on any boards that have not been addressed at this desk here for me.
And if I, if I may through the chair, I, I know that we've talked about, um, part of this may be attendance, and that, you know, at, at some point, we need to make sure that people are attending these meetings.
Yeah. Right, and I think we do have a bylaw in place where if you miss so many meetings, you're off.
That's actually Mass General Law.
Oh, it's a Mass Law, I thought we had adopted that bylaw.
Yeah.
So I just, we need to make sure that we, you know, put that into what we're reviewing with.
But I think. And I think notify the chairs of all the boards and commissions that that exists, and empower them to go to the town administrator if help needs to be had to rectify those situations.
And are there minutes to these meetings, and where do they sit, there's a lot of.
Lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll, I'll review that all along. Anything else? All right, we're gonna go on to ratification of new appointments to the finance committee.
Uh, yes. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we ratify Randy's suggested appointments to the finance committee with their recommended terms as presented.
Second.
We have the list, right?
Yeah, it was a separate, it was in our packet, it was like a separate document in the front, not, not.
We don't wanna list the names? Uh, so.
We can say, ca- I can.
Yeah, just.
Karen Narwald, term expiring twenty twenty three, Thomas Rochella, term expiring twenty twenty four, Lynn Winica, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name.
That's right.
Um, term expiring twenty twenty four, um, Alexander Mallett, sorry again if I mispronounced your name, twenty twenty four.
I'll amend my motion to include the names as Leah has read, with the exception of the pronunciation, I'll take no responsibility for that.
Winica is correct, all right, do we have a second?
I'm second.
Any other discussion?
Do we need to do something with Ian specification?
Uh, no, cause he's already, that's already been accepted and filled, so, thank you.
No.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoit eye.
For city eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Uh, next on the agenda, agenda is the farmer's market, um, I met with Von, uh, Beth and Ron to discuss that, and she had sent out a survey to all the local farmers. Um, she has not received a lot of response as of yet, so that's still an ongoing pro- process.
Send it, and which method?
Um, I think she got a list from the ag commission.
Yeah, I mean, how did she send it? In paper form or in emails?
Emails, I think, emails.
Okay.
Is that just not an effective method?
Half the stuff I don't even get, you know, really.
So, I will discuss, um, further outreach and trying to utilize, uh, other methods and be more productive and try and get some kind of response as far as interest.
I mean, if they.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dave?
Uh, being on the ag commission, farmer's market, uh, I'm gonna say maybe three or so years ago, we had quite a few different groups come into the ag commission and discussion about the farmer's market, and that's when we decided not to push it, because of all the surrounding towns have it, and we did not want to draw those people into Rutland. And everybody would start, uh, hurting, and that's one reason why we never put a farmer's market in town here.
If, if I may through the chair as well, uh, this is actually something, uh, that I, when I first ran, wanted to do and started inquiring and looking around, and similar to Dick's point. I had heard from some of the local farmers that they felt that farmer's market, you have farms coming from outside, it wouldn't necessarily benefit the farms we have here, because it, it is costly to put something on. You have to pay somebody to go out, and I think that there was one at one point, and it sounds like it wasn't very lucrative for our own internal farmers, so I mean, my fear would be you have a farmer's market and you get people from hardwood coming in, and they're taking all that money out of town with them, and it doesn't really benefit the folks we have here.
Well, I do know through COVID that several of the farmer's markets closed down, not necessarily around this area, but I mean, throughout the state, um.
If I may through the chair, I had hea- and again, this is years ago, I had heard that a lot of the farmers in town sell their products at farm stores on, on their farm. And didn't feel like it was a wise investment of their time to transport that product somewhere to then compete with potentially outside attending farms also.
It's, exactly.
Um, but I also know the farmer's market, uh, repertoire has expanded quite a lot, and it's a lot more than just, I say just food, but, um, it's more, there's a lot more handmade stuff, which I think a lot of our farms also have diversified and have started selling handmade goods in their farm markets also. So I wonder if there's a way that we could better promote our existing farms and farm stores, um, while we continue to explore the, the farmer's market aspect, if that makes sense.
You know, it's, through the chair, it's too bad we don't have a farmer on our board that we could ask about this, um.
Well, the biggest thing, you're gonna find out what the cost is, what's it gonna cost the farmer to go out there? I mean.
Well, I mean, I guess we're still in the stages of doing this, doing the survey, I mean, we did consult with the state to see if there's any interest, I mean, the idea is obviously to promote interest in business
Oh, I think so, I should.
in town, to bring people in, um, and give people an opportunity to sell their, cause I mean, I know there's some small farmers, um, you know, like Faith Mayer sells all the, uh, what do you call it?
Her alpaca.
Alpaca stuff and all that stuff, I don't think she goes to farmer's market, but she might be interested in doing something on the common, there are some small farmers that don't go, I mean, you don't do farmer's markets anywhere else, do you?
No, I don't do, no, I don't do.
So, they make.
Cause it costs too much, you gotta have, you gotta pay to join it, then you gotta have the insurance and the liability, the, the, the.
Well, this was at, this was at no, no, you have to have separate insurance to do a farmer's market?
Mm-hmm, and you got the board health breathing down your neck if it's a degree off, and, like, if you're selling frozen stuff, frozen meat and whatever. There's a lot to it.
Well, yeah, I did, I guess it depends on what type, what type of product, Dick.
My, my opinion right at the moment, David George is the one you should be speaking to, because he's spending a lot of time with the ag commission and trying to promote agritourism, and that's one of the things we're trying to.
He's part of the loop.
Yeah, trying to get involved with and, and, uh, set up, uh, brochures or whatever it is it's gonna be, to let the people go out to the different farms.
Yeah, well, that was another thing that we had discussed, was getting back to doing the Farm Day Tour that we used to do a while back to, to do that.
Mm-hmm. Used to really, years ago, we did that, worked out quite well.
Yeah, so we discussed doing that as well.
And that's, you could also, I mean, that's also technically a farmer's market, you know, if you have kind of a farm tour in the town, and everyone can go by where is it, different places.
So, I mean, it's still, like, in, in the initiation stage, as far as trying to get input from all the local, um, farmers, and like I said, that's part of the discussion, the farm tour. We've talked to the state, and Dave is in the loop as far as, cause Ron, you know, is trying to really promote ag tourism to get more, you know, with the things, you know, potential going up at the Heifer Project and with the, the milk room and other, you know, people are gonna start coming in town, how can we attract them to other farmers in the area as well, to try to get, you know, im- improved sales for the other farmers. So anyway, like I say, it's still at the starting phase, and you know, we're, we're a little better trying to outreach to the farms to see if we can get interest.
Yeah, I think, I, I, it's great.
I think it, this, what we could do anyways, to, to, if we're surveying the farms, what do you sell, when do you sell it, and get that kind of information up on the website.
Mm-hmm. Right.
The people have a one stop place to go, and, you know, if, if they're selling zucchini, but they're selling, you know, peppers, you know, where are you going, it sounds crazy, but it is spread out.
Right, and obviously working with the ag, ag commission as well, um, so.
You know, with the, uh. Yeah.
If I may through the chair, skip, what's a, what do you think is the best method to try to reach, I'm, all the farmers, I know right now farmers are busy, like, it's nice weather, it's
Case, it's in.
prime hay time, it's prime animal growth time.
Most of the farms, except the young ones, aren't computer savvy.
Right.
So it's a letter in the mail, or somebody had the police deliver it as a ride around town, you know, that.
Oh, we have constables for that.
More like the personal.
We just appointed constables, we should use the constables.
Yeah.
Yeah, but those, I, those guys don't get paid, they get paid very little.
But I, but Leah, if I'm correct, were you asking more about the timing of when the best time is to actually reach farmers to do it?
I was thinking both ways, I mean, I was thinking, knowing that some farmers aren't necessarily on the computer nonstop.
Right.
Period, whether it's, n- now is a busy time, or when it's a less busy time, what's a better, what's an additional method that we could reach, I think it's the question we ask over and over and over again, how can we get the most information out and the most feedback in, and we don't seem to have an answer, but it's good to hear that it's, if we're targeting farm specific, specifically farms to get letters out, or.
Shallow mail.
How does the ag commission communicate with all of its members?
Yeah, they don't.
Uh, if they get out there, they were actually going door to door and knocking on, you know, when we were doing our brochure.
Yeah.
Well, I guess Dave's gonna be busy.
I think so, one of the things I'm trying to do with Dave and Ron is get a bus together and take them on a tour, because they have no idea where all the different places are in town.
My, through the chair, my only concern is just, I, I'd like to, if we're gonna go this route, and hopefully if it's successful, we make it something that becomes an annual thing, I just wanna make sure that we're benefiting our local folks and not having folks come in and then take the money out, like, for example, we had the same kind of conversation with the food truck stuff and everything like that, and we have businesses in town that we wanna support, so that's my only concern.
Hmm, any other comments or discussion on the farmer's market? Okay, uh, next is one sixty one, discussion of letters to Democratic and Republican town committees regarding potential poll workers. It came from Anita.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not really sure which.
I have to flip this. I have to flip this, it was in the front. A hundred minutes. It's the same time zone.
I'm gonna all shuffle, cause I started moving all the letters around from the, from any one of these. Oh, was it in a different tab, Leah, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it was in the front tab, or the first tab.
Oh, no, maybe, it must have been there, here, do you wanna look mine?
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, sorry, I'll cover it then.
I'll get a print, uh, okay, per NGL chapter fifty four twelve, election workers are to be appointed by the select board between July fifteenth and August fifteenth each year. Following is a list of the current election officers who are registered in the Republican Party, uh, Louise Gi- Jordan, Ann Davis, Davis, Scott Davis, Robin DeSantis, Desatels.
Desatels.
Desatels, thank you, and majority of our election workers are registered as unenrolled. If your committee would like to provide the board of registrars with a list of additional names, please submit them to the town clerk by July fifteenth.
I'll make a motion to sign both letters as written on behalf of the board and send them to both the Republican and Democratic town committees respectively, seeking further names that they may submit by July fifteenth.
Second.
Should we just read the, um, list of, the following? Should we just read the, um, listed, the following is a name of current election officers who are registered in the Democratic Party unless that seems to be listed, the, the Republican, just so it's official.
Yeah, I've listed the other ones, yeah. Yep, so.
Alright, uh, race chair.
Kenneth, Kenneth Lowe, Sandra Morse, Edward Pur- Purcell, um, Noreen Guinea, Lynn T- uh,
Turcot.
Turcot, Christine Hayes, I don't know of all the names. So those are the numbers. So, do we have a motion and a two seconds?
Mm-hmm. Skip a second.
Okay, any other discussion? Alright, uh, roll call.
Lock eye.
Genoid eye.
Or city eye.
Wait, the night.
Nichols eye.
And I just wanna thank all the poll workers for the work that they've done this year, especially with the extra election, I guess, and everything.
Um, that's, oops, that's my other junk I'm putting in. Alright. Okay. Uh, I guess the only other thing is new business?
Sorry, I see discussion of possible action, Purple Heart community, but I don't have any, I don't think I have any information on that.
I wanna have that on there.
I requested we move that to the next meeting.
Well, that's, this is probably the original, this is new.
Um, we had started to, through the chair, we had started to take action on our designation as a Purple Heart community prior to COVID with Karen.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think we completed the required steps, so Karen wanted to get some clarification on that and I suggested to Beth we move it to the, um, the next agenda for the, uh, I think it's the twelfth.
Okay, sorry, I.
No, that's okay. Uh, so next on is new business. Um, I don't even know if it's new business, but at some point we, we really didn't put anything on this or discuss doing the town administrator review or the retreat that we had discussed possibly discussing at our next meeting, so.
Do we wanna, because we can discuss scheduling, do we wanna just discuss a date for that retreat? It was my understanding after the last meeting that that review would be kind of what, like a, a back and forth informal process?
I don't think I wanna sign that.
Is, is that, um, so is that the, every, the consensus of the board that the review would be part of the retreat? Is that how we're gonna handle that? Okay.
Yeah. I, I had got that impression. I apologize.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, well, I know there was a lot of discussion, um, cause we weren't quite sure how we were gonna approach the review, so.
Yeah.
Um, so everybody's in agreement, we'll schedule the retreat and part of that retreat will be discussion of the, um, town administrator review.
If, if I can just make a recommendation, I know Peter's watching through the chair, that the last time we had a retreat, we had cable there to film, um, and take minutes, uh, for kind of public transparency.
Okay.
And we did have it at the Woodhouse, which was a, I think a better venue, um, personally than, than this room because it a little bit more, it's a little bit more informal and we can have those, those kind of free flow of ideas. So I'll just make that recommendation if I can.
So obviously we're gonna check on availability.
I should design that. I should.
And I, I would just like to open up for discussion. I'm fine with having it filmed for cable. I also sometimes feel that if we're doing it strict strictly as a retreat aspect of kind of bouncing ideas around, that sometimes that gets misconstrued to the public, that that's what's going to happen and it can hinder kind of the feedback and the natural progression of information sharing and, and formation. So I understand the public transparency side of things and I'm all for that. And I also struggle with sometimes that hi- hinders it because I say something totally off the wall that would never happen, but it stimulates additional conversation, but I wouldn't feel comfortable saying that because I know it's gonna be picked up and run with that oh, that selectman white man said that suddenly we're gonna become part of Holden or something crazy, like, I mean.
No, I think, the, the problem, and, and this came up the last time too,
I agree.
it is an open meeting violation to have a meeting where you're discussing substantive things without having a public record or inviting the public to that meeting.
We, we can invite the public and we can have minutes, official minutes. It does not have to be televised.
I, I just, I would rather have it transparent to the public than not.
And that's, I mean.
We can just, if we can agree to refrain from saying things off the wall, then maybe we can avoid that issue.
I mean, I just think that it, in some ways, I, and, and this is obviously conversation for the whole board, I don't care, but I just think that sometimes people pick up on one aspect of something that was said and it actually would never come to fruition or it could potentially be an idea that's thirty years out the, down the road, but then it gets spread far and wide.
I, I guess my only concern is the Woodhouse is not that big, so if we didn't televise it, are we gonna in, be inviting that many more people to come in and not be able to accommodate them?
Right. Right.
Um, so I, you know, I, I think that would be one of my concerns is not being able to allow access.
I just, no, I just think it's, it's, it comes down to the simple fact that the public does deserve to know what we say and what we think and especially if it's in a public forum with a public employee. I mean, we're talking about the future direction of the town and a review of the town administrator and I, I don't wanna participate if there's no transparency in it. I won't participate.
Right.
And I actually one hundred percent agree that the town, uh, the, the review should be public sta- televised and, and so that's my, my question, if we're doing it together, how to, how we would manage that. That's, I mean, again, it's for discussion for the whole board, it's.
Is there any way that this could be, um, an executive session?
No.
Uh-huh.
No, there's no legal way to make this an executive session.
And I'm all for having minutes and sharing documentation. In the past, we had done, you know, like handwritten notes and everything and that was all put together and, and available for people to look at. So it's not necess- I'm not opposed to that side of things. I just think that sometimes in conversation stuff gets picked up and misconstrued, that's all.
So the, the previous retreat, was it just like a, was there an agenda or was it just open discussion was the agenda or was there a specific?
I think it was open discussion, goal setting.
It was the agenda I think was just goal setting.
Okay.
Yeah. But I mean, because it is, whenever we meet, it's an open meeting and the public is invited and I just, I don't, we shouldn't have, because then the perception becomes that we're talking about this now.
Right. Well, I, I think the point is especially if we're gonna discuss the town administrators' performance and even more so, we, we still need to involve the public cause that, that does need to be public. If we were just gonna have a, a discussion about trying to set goals and stuff, I, I mean, I guess it wouldn't have, I, my, my concern would still be that if Pete, the public wanted to come, the Woodhouse would not accommodate that many people, so I don't think that would be a good idea. So I guess, I, I guess we would stick to previous retreats and talk to Peter about, um, filming it and have, see if we can have it at the Woodhouse. Like I said, especially if we're gonna do the town administrator review. I think it needs to be acceptable.
They signed it before I read it, Leah, so don't sign it.
I was gonna say, right. And this, is this just the chair to sign?
That's just what we did, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So are we all in agreement? So we'll do it just pretty much the same as the last one. The only difference, we'll be doing goal setting and we'll be doing the town administrator review discussion?
Yeah.
Is that the plan? Um, as far as dates, obviously we're gonna have to check for availability of the, the Woodhouse, but is there any specific days or time, dates that you wanna look at? I don't want, I don't think we wanna put it off too far down the line because this adminis- uh, the town administrator's review is way past, um, wh- when it should, where it should have been.
I do have a question for Peter. If, if doing the Woods House is, is a big obstacle to, to record.
Oh, okay.
Peter, are you in there? I know he's listening, so, I mean, you can provide some insight. Uh, last time it didn't seem like that big of a deal.
Yes. Just, we get used to having everything all around.
He brought up, he brought up a camera.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we, we got a bunch of pizzas outside our table and it was.
All the greasy black smoke.
So is there, is there any issue with you as far as getting, um, access at the Woodhouse if we had a meeting?
No, no, we have a portable camera and microphone setup, so we can, we can deal with that.
Perfect, thank you.
It's just more of an int- intimate atmosphere to, for discussion and stuff, you know, rather than, you know, the Walkners courtroom here.
And if I may, it's also a single table with everybody sitting around and it is more intimate, you're right, but it's also completely out of this space, which I think is important to getting you folks
Yeah.
to be more open. I think that being out of the normal environment is helpful.
Right, open spaces. Okay, so we'll be at the Woodhouse, it will be filmed and we need to look at some possible dates.
Yeah.
Um, days of the week specifically, good or bad for the board? I mean, I know we typically meet on Mondays, I don't know.
Mondays and Tuesdays.
Okay.
Well, I think, uh, Skip is on conservation, so Tuesdays sometimes can be tied up. I'm on CIPC and that's Thursdays and maybe the Woodhouse.
Okay, so why don't we just do the, an alternate Monday to our regular meeting?
Sure.
Yeah.
The board amenable, amenable to that, okay.
Yeah, so if you want, I mean, we could do next week if you wanna shoot for next week or we could shoot for.
Next week's the fifth, which might be the observed holiday for the four.
Oh, yeah.
It is.
It is, it is, yeah.
Okay, so after the, after the next meeting would be, I think, the nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
We could shoot for the nineteenth if everyone's amenable to that.
Does the nineteenth work for everyone? It's good, okay. So I'll just double check and make sure that the Woodhouse is available and, and then at six, is that still a good time?
Sure.
I'm assuming.
Yeah, it's also standard practice for the chair to bring pizza, so.
Oh, really? Okay, I'll make, I'll make it.
I'll buy it.
For me.
For our people.
That was really the linchpin of me voting in my support is, I expect pizza out of that, uh, that beer.
I think one year the town administrator got sandwiches from the marketplace, another year the chair got pizzas from, I don't remember if it was at my house or at Toulous.
So this was a setup, so we were supposed to do this discussion prior to.
Yeah.
Alright, any other new business or items, correspondence that we need to?
Yeah.
We do have some correspondence.
Okay.
While we're looking at that, can I just make a comment for the public and everybody here for, to s- fill out the master plan if you, survey if you haven't done that yet? Um, rutlandmasterplan.com, um, and then there's a link to the survey, so we wanna do a final push if you guys can all kind of share far and wide with your networks and everything.
I saw the post. Actually, people reached out to me asking what it was, so I think it's reached a lot of people.
Yeah. Yeah, so just, yeah.
Okay, so.
There's, it looks like there's two questions.
We have two letters, this correspondence through the chair thanking the town and the workers providing the COVID vaccines.
Okay, I suppose that's an all, kinda lengthy letter, another.
Correct. I don't think we have to.
You don't have to read the letter? You think it's?
No.
I mean, I think it would be nice to read and acknowledge.
Yeah, I, I think, like, if somebody sent the letter, I think we probably should read it out loud. To whom it may concern, this letter is to commend all of those people involved in the COVID-nineteen vaccination clinic rollout in Rutland, exemplary leadership and organization was displayed from the onset. I'd like to extend special recognition and recognition to the Rutland Fire Chief Seth Nipes and all of his staff, Scott Gilroy, Rich Stevens, Lynn Miller and Elliot Nato, Kathy Dixon and Karen, uh, now, and, and the entire staff of the Board of Health. Thanks go also to the members of the CERT, Wachusett Medical Corps, under the direction of Judy Allen and Peg and all of the volunteer medic, medical and non-medical that made the Rutland Vaccine Clinic a success. A special thanks to Carrie Remington and staff for all their calls you made and the use of the space at the Rut- Rutland Public Library. Acknowledgement to all the volunteers at the Council on Aging, under the guidance of Nancy Nichols, the professionalism and teamwork displayed by all was unsurpassed. I also would like to mention the Public Safety Department under the di- direction of Chief Nick Mon- Monaco and Supervisor Moriarty. I am proud to be a Rutland resident and a registered nurse. The entire undertaking was a well-oiled machine. It does take a village and it gave Rutland mass notoriety. I commend all the people that had a hand in the public health effort. Effort, praise you, you were all outstanding and you must be recognized. I also would like to send my thanks and appreciation to Reverend James Boland at Saint Pa- Patrick's Church for the use of the parking lot, as well as the Reverend David Fish at the First Congregational Church for the use of the parking lots and Ben Frost. I am sorry if I forgot to mention anyone in any group. May God bless you all and you all, in all of your personal and professional endeavors. Cynthia Katinas.
That was nice.
Man. Dear Board of Selectmen, I want to thank the town of Rutland for hosting the COVID clinic. It was very well organized. Furthermore, everyone works, everyone working was so nice and professional. Please let them know how much all of them are appreciated. Sincerely, Tom Kin- Kinisky?
Kibisky.
Resident of New Brain Treat. Okay, and they did have an appreciation last week, which was very well attended, a lot of local restaurants. I'm wearing my shirt.
Me too.
Sixty thousand vaccinated, um, it was a really nice event and, um, I wanna thank the team as well and all the volunteers as well as all the restaurants. There was like five different breweries that attended as well. Um, so it was a great event and it was much appreciated and and ditto to the, not only the organization, but, um, the amazing staff and it was all over Facebook constantly about how accommodating and, uh, organized and, and the, the great customer service that everybody received. So we should be proud of the accomplishments that were, were made there. Um, is this, what's this one?
That was the.
Okay, so was that the only correspondence that we had to make? Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, anything else?
Motion, Roger.
Did you, did you have something met or?
No, I just said, it's a procedure.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Lock eye.
Genoid eye.
Or city eye.
Wait, the night.
Nichols eye.
Thank you.